States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so tonight we have two different sections only. We're going to do public comment and then Q and A. During the public comment, we're going to follow our typical procedure where we'll be bound by the rules of public comment. And during Q and A, we can talk back and forth. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our residents and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the Secretary to the Board. When the Secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person and that no discussion of personnel matters or responses to questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. And I'll also remind you, please speak into the microphone, else we will not have it recorded in our minutes. Thank you.
Beth Herman.
Good evening. My name is Beth Herman. I live at 2631 Barrington Drive East. My kids go to Homestead Elementary School. I am here tonight in support of the referendum to support junior high athletics. I am a community member, a taxpayer, a coach, and an athletic director in a junior high. First of all, I would like those of you that have participated in athletics in a junior high to raise your hand. You all know the importance of junior high athletics. You know the values and the lessons that students learn from participating in junior high athletics. Not only does each individual student learn values and lessons, they learn the significance of teamwork. Don't we want our children to learn the value of being something, a part of something bigger than themselves? We must think about what is best for our children and students. Are you forgetting the positive aspects that sports bring to the culture found in every junior high? Junior high athletics create a sense of community, not only for the participant, but for the students and teachers who cheer them on whether they win or they lose. Students take pride in their teams that represent their school. Junior high is where student athletes learn that they may, they have lots of expectations to fulfill. Role models, academics, a good student, how to be a leader, how to be resilient, which is really hard in junior high. We don't want our students to learn these traits. Don't we want them to learn that trait before they enter high school? Finally, as a mom in this district, I want my children to learn the importance of what it is to be a part of a school environment that values athletics, believes that sports contribute to positive social emotional health. I want my kids to experience that what I did in junior high, experience the fun I had participating with my friends. I want my kids to learn the expectations of what it's like to be a student athlete role model. I want my kids and all kids to put down the technology and create real relationships with people. I want you to support the referendum so junior highs can have an athletic program and show that this district values our children. Thank you for your time.
Hello, good evening. I'm Olivia Kepke. I live 285 Foster Drive in Prescott Mill. I go to Murphy Junior High School, and tonight I will remind you all about the importance of junior high school sports and why you should put the referendum on the ballot this spring. From my experience, junior high sports have benefited me and my friends very much. I just finished my first cross-country season, and it was fantastic. I loved being on a team, and I loved the competitiveness, and I learned to never give up even when it was difficult. I loved cheering on my team, and regardless of how fast somebody was, we congratulated them or ran with them to help them finish the race. This builds character. Another reason is it lacks foresight to cut junior high sports because the middle school sports experience is an essential building block for a strong and successful high school athletic program. Since we all know that practice will make us better at a certain skill, expecting us to be good at sports without competitive practice in junior high is illogical. We are also taught about the pillars of character. If you cut the junior high school sports programs, you are cutting a great way to build and show those traits. For example, from cross-country, I have learned good sportsmanship, respect towards others, responsibility, and honesty. Being on a team also, being on a team also builds the message of supporting others. For example, on meet days, we would all wear our sweatshirts to show support for each other. We all enjoyed feeling like part of a team at school. As I hope one can see, I loved cross-country, and I can't wait for next year and the opportunity to run again and participate in other school sports. It's important for every student athlete's personal growth, and the referendum needs to be put on the ballot, on the future ballot, to give us a chance to have the best middle school sports experience that we deserve. We only get to be in junior high once and have been looking forward to playing on our school sports teams and cheering on our teammates. Please do not make decisions that will take that opportunity away from us. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Sprowling, School Administration, and S D three oh eight Board members. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. It's an honor to be in front of you again. I came here probably a couple years ago, and we discussed the things going on at that time, and I'd like to follow up on that. But first, I'd like to congratulate Oswego East for their recent designation. It's really amazing what our schools continued to do, how they continue to perform at a high level, not because of the current funding, but in spite of our budget situation. So I'd like to give you just a quick update on some of the things going on in the Aurora area of S D three oh eight and some various projects that are taking place at this time. First of all, and I'm not sure I mentioned this, the last time I was here, last year, different polling is done throughout the state on the areas that millennials are moving to in the state. All from Cairo, Illinois, all the way up to Waukegan and Antioch, the whole state. The number one place millennials are moving to in the state of Illinois is the Gold Coast, Magnificent Mile. Figures. The number two place is the Aurora area of S D three oh eight, the whole state. And we know the reason they're moving to the area. They're moving because of the schools. That's really the reason that that area was built. They continue to move there. And the first project we have going on right now is called Laurelton Place, just opened up. The real estate broker opened up 11 lots. The people camped out overnight. They sold out in 48 hours. When I went by to talk to her, she said, you know, if we had opened up all the lots and advertised, they didn't advertise, we could have sold out the whole subdivision in a weekend. That's the type of demand we still have. Our second project, and I just got the name of it yesterday, Ogden Ridge at Farnsworth and 34. We have two components, single-family residential, we're going to be building, I believe it's about 90 homes or so, I have a meeting about it tomorrow morning, and then we have a senior housing component. Because everybody has to do their part. We have to all be in this together. So I, as an elected official, I not only ask, but am demanding, when we have these new projects, these new subdivisions, the larger ones, we have to have a senior component to it, senior housing component, where we can have seniors move in, that there's that need, and they will not burden our school system with additional children. The third complex, and I've spoken to some of the top administrators about it, but it's not widely known because it's just in preliminary stages. We do have a developer who's come to us and talked to us about the land south of Wolf's Crossing, across from Bednarsek and Wolf's Crossing School. Very large possible development there. The Eola extension is going very well. We're going to finish that in the spring, and that will open up the rest of Route 30 for possible retail business. Because as I said, we all need to do our part. We're going to support our schools. We have to have new developments, single-family residential, new developments with senior housing, and of course, it's very important to have a business aspect so we have those tax dollars. But again, I thank you, the Board, for the job you've done. I thank the administration, and I thank our school, our teachers who are in there every day, fighting. But it's not because of the budget, it's in spite of the budget. And I think some of us maybe saw the numbers that came out this week, that we're funded at about two-thirds of what we need to be, about 67%, I believe is what I saw. We have to do better. We, as a community, have to do better. And in March, when you see that on the ballot, we have to stand up for our kids. We have to stand up for our schools, and we have to stand up for our community. Thank you.
Tony Van Denen.
Thank you for your time today, and thanks to everyone here who invests in the lives and future of our children. I start here because it's true. We are all working together to give the best for our kids. And I have, in this school district, five children who will be growing up. They're here with us today. They're 12, 10, 7, and twin fours coming up soon. As you can imagine, I care greatly about the choices being made in our district. I am here today to share with you about my perspective on the value of junior high sports. I'm going to share personally today, which is something I don't always share about, but I'm going to do that today, and those who've known me for years may learn something new. I had some challenges in my early childhood years, an only child of a teenage, mostly single mom. I was raised in a small rural community, my high school 200 people large. My mom worked hard to provide, most times two jobs, and a factory, and as a bartender. My sports experience had humble beginnings, seventh grade basketball. In all ways that you can be a rookie, I was, and quite frankly, I was not very good. My parents still like to joke with me today about those early games and how painful it was to watch. But I persisted and practiced and grew as an athlete, and this came at a timely point for me. Because in junior high, I was searching for answers to things like, what are my strengths and giftings? What do I want to do with my time? And like some others at this time in life, I was awkward. In fact, I thought about bringing my eighth grade picture, so you could all see just how terribly awkward I was. But at that time, it wasn't funny to me. You know what it was? It was hard, and sports were an outlet. Then in ninth grade, I added volleyball and track to that basketball team, and my skills continued to grow, which I was able to be part of varsity team as a sophomore, which placed in the top four in state. In track, I placed fourth in the half mile as a junior, and as a senior, first, state champion in the half mile. This afforded scholarship opportunities and made a way for my bachelor's, which is I've also gone on to attain my master's and in six weeks, my doctorate. Not bad for a first-generation college student. You see, for a kid like me, sports were an opportunity. I may even say a catalyst. I didn't want to miss a day of school because I didn't want to miss a practice, or a game, or a meet. I also was not an all-star student in my early years, as my mom can tell you, but I wanted to keep my grades up so that I would be eligible. I didn't want to get caught at some random party because I was afraid to be benched and to let down my team. For a kid like, for a kid like me, sports taught me hard work, persistence, diligence, teamwork. It taught me grit, and it matters if you show up. And boy, do we need that, because you know what? Life's hard. It taught me to set goals and dream and how to deal with pressure, and even to harness it. It taught me to win well and to lose well, like that season-ending loss by one in double overtime at supersectionals ending our state-bound dreams as juniors. You play all out until that buzzer buzzes, and you'd be proud of that effort because you left it all on the court. And I can still remember my coaches to this day. In fact, I can still hear the voice of my varsity basketball coach saying, no one will beat us in the fourth quarter, which of course meant more drills and more practice and more training. I think of the lessons that I've learned through sports. It's not for everyone, I know that, but for kids like me, who couldn't have afforded a club, what opportunities would there have been? I was thrilled to have new shoes at the start of the season, let alone some fancy club fees. It wouldn't have happened. So I ask that you'll consider adding a referendum to the ballot to support opportunities for our junior high student athletes, because who knows what the humble beginnings may yield in the future? And who knows what future state champions may be among us, and the opportunities that may come thereafter? Thank you very much.
Olivia Van Denen.
Hello, my name is Olivia Van Denen, and I'm from Murphy Junior High School. I really want to start off by saying that junior high sports mean a lot to me. For the past two years, I have done cross-country, and I absolutely loved it. We had two great coaches that not only taught us how to run well, but to win and lose well, too. We also had a great team that supported each other. I made so many new friends, had fun, worked hard, and learned a lot. I have so many people to thank for that. So in the end, I have, I'm here to ask, please not take away sports, something that so many people love.
Hi, good evening, Board. And I want to say thank you for your time and consideration of what everyone has been saying tonight. And I wanted to say that, for me, junior high sports has been a great experience, and I'm a high school student now, and so that was a very great experience for me to have, and I'm so glad for that. And I would like to support the rejoining of the junior high sports referendum back on the ballot. So I'm Lauren Daskasil. I live at 423 Ranger Drive. And I'm a freshman, I'm a basketball player. I've played basketball for two years in junior high, and I'm also a track and field participant. And I just want to say that sports give us a very good aspect to life that we all need to learn at some times. And so it gives us lots of experiences with other people, teammates, that could be representative of colleagues in our future. It helps us interact with other people, know when it's okay to win or lose, and it gives us a taste of competition, teamwork, connections, and it helps us with discovering what our values are. And teamwork, it helps us feel to be a part of a team, and it goes way beyond sports. So being a part of a team, being part of the basketball team at Plank, was a very beneficial experience for me. And it felt like I had a family aside from school, and it was very important for me in that situation. And I want my sister to be able to experience this because I know how important it was to me. I was able to find things that I value, and I was able to have fun, work hard, and do my best. And I, we learn sport, we learn aspects in sports that are very important to our futures, like time management. It's very hard to manage a whole bunch of honors classes with sports, but if it's very important to you, it makes all the difference. And so being able to be a part of a team that was like that, that was very supporting of grades in school in general, was very amazing. And it helps us be dedicated to our future and want to know what we're doing in our future, and to explore that and pursue that was a great thing that we could find through sports. And so sports also brings out the want to put in effort in schoolwork, and in our sports, and our futures, and everything else like that. And also, if we didn't have these competitive sports for junior highs, and we only kept the intramurals, not only are they very costly for students nowadays, it's like $35 or something to participate, but it doesn't give you the same sense of teamwork as it would an actual team that goes and competes against other schools. Sports helps you prepare for high school, because I participated in the trials for Oswego East Basketball today, and I know it's very hard, and they expect you to have an understanding of the sports from a junior high level. And so going into a high school sport without that understanding might be very difficult for some people. And I also think that maybe a solution to this would be fundraisers, because parents and family and friends are very, more than willing to support students in helping fundraise for sports. And sports make our teams and our schools unique. It helps us have pride in our other classmates, in our teammates, and it helps elevate that aspect. And so people go to these sporting events, and they're very proud of their schools, they're cheering them on, and that's very important for a school to have, because some schools don't have that, some people don't have that pride. And I think that's very important for people to recognize that other people, other classmates that they have, are doing very cool things, and they're supporting your school, and that's something that people need to know about. And so ultimately, the school district is responsible for students to grow and learn, and extracurriculars are a part of this experience of learning. And in my opinion, it's very imperative to a student's success. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Elo. I live at 319 Morgan Valley Drive here in Oswego. I am a parent in the district. I have a 15-year-old and a 13-year-old. My kids have gone, one to Brokaw and two, Eastview, when it was a kindergarten center. Both have gone to Prairie Point and to Trauber. Full disclosure, my oldest now goes to a private high school, which is not a reflection on my opinion of any of the high schools here in the district. It's a whole different reason. But we do pay tuition, and I am still here fighting to make sure that the referendum gets on the ballot, because I am a community member of Oswego, and we need to better fund our schools. I am also a sub. I have been subbing in the district for eight years, starting mostly as a teacher's assistant and in the office, and in the last year, I've been teaching in the classrooms. I've been working in the same school most of the eight years, which has allowed me an opportunity to see how things have changed as the cuts have been happening throughout the year, years, excuse me. I have noticed the increase in workload to our administrators at each of the school because, of course, jobs were cut at the admin level. I understand you guys had to make cuts, so that's, I'm not saying anything negative towards you. I've seen the increase in class size and how that affects teachers. I've seen the increase in calls daily for support that students need, and it's changed year over year and grown more and more. Calls asking for admin support, social worker support, sometimes TAs for backups. Increase in services required by more students. On a perfect day, the way the schools are staffed now, this could work, everyone in their place, but most days are not perfect. We are in a skeleton crew right now. Our TA numbers are down, cafeteria numbers are down, staffing, custodial staffing is reduced, and you see the effect, day in and day out. You see that there is a rush to cover and to make sure that everything is handled. Because of all of this, I fully support getting the referendum back on the ballot and plan to work with many others to make sure that this time it gets passed. I feel terrible for our staff. I feel terrible for our students. I feel like we're letting people down. I appreciate you guys volunteering. This cannot be easy, because you guys take the brunt of so many comments that are made, opinions that are out there. Ultimately, we have a state that's not funding our school. We know that. We can't sit and wait anymore. I came from corporate America. We've dealt with years in the past where we've had cuts and reductions, a real tight year, a real tight period. That's fine in the corporate world, but in schools, kids cannot redo these years. You cannot redo second grade. You get one chance. And so we, as a community, need to step up. We need to make sure that these kids are getting better. We are not doing enough for them. It is too bad Oswego is in the situation that it's in, in the bubble that we're in, that we don't have more money coming in. But those are the facts. So now we have to take action. Our schools deserve to be fully funded, at least funded better than they are. You guys deserve to have a budget that you can work with, instead of having to pick every single thing apart. We moved to Oswego for a job, but came and stayed in this district because of the schools, and we've been so impressed and so overwhelmed by how wonderful the schools, the staff, the people of the community are. But we are now really lacking because we don't have enough funds available. So I ask you, please, to make sure that this referendum ends up on the ballot. And I tell you, I promise you that there are many of us out there who are going to work to make sure that people vote for it this time, and we will do our best to continue to support you and the entire district. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nisha Knard. I feel so unprepared for everyone that's come before me. Definitely don't want to end on the huge momentum for the evening regarding school sports, so definitely advocate there. However, my comment of what I wanted to share is, I understand that, I come from a corporate America background, work in cybersecurity, manage budgets myself in the rings of 50, 60 million dollars. I understand what it's like to have to cut a budget, and you can't save everything, and you have to make hard decisions, and some things need to go. But what I'm most passionate about, and one of the things that affect my child, who is a third grader in Oswego three oh eight School District, is regarding dual-language program. It's very important to the families who have children that have already started in the dual-language program and would like to continue all the way through high school. The kids work really hard, the staff work really hard. So I just want to make sure and that you guys get to hear from the parents and voice opinions about how important of a program that it is. We pay our tax dollars, just like everyone else, for every other benefit, or perk, or nice thing, or service, or different things that are offered at the school. We appreciate the offering, and just want to make sure that when you are going through that round of what needs to go and what gets to stay. I know this is a hot-button one. It comes up a lot. It always seems to end up on the list. And I just would implore you to think about the children and the staff who've worked so hard and already dedicated and committed so much to not put us on the list this time. So I know, I wasn't at the last meeting, I think that there was even some discussion about, oh, you know, maybe we need to pay for it, or things like that. I guess that is an option, but that can be an option for every other item that needs to be cut. So I don't know why that particular one always gets singled out, but that is definitely what myself and a lot of other parents who have, if I have one child, but children or multiple children in the program, and it's something that I'm very passionate about. We care a lot about, the kids work very hard, and would really like to not see it just get back on the drawing list of things that possibly need to go. So even if it gets discontinued for future, think about the children that are already in it, so at least let them see it all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, the Q and A session will follow the following procedures and protocols. Individuals wishing to make a comment or ask a question will be required to fill out a comment card with their name, will be required to fill out a comment card with their name, email, and question so that the board and/or administration can follow up if a question cannot be answered at the meeting. To ensure the process is as efficient as possible, we ask that speakers submit their comment card to the board secretary prior to the meeting. The board secretary will call each person, in the order the cards were received, to come to the microphone and state their name and the general topic of their question or statement, such as budget, facilities, athletics, special education, et cetera. To ensure that all topics get addressed in the maximum extent possible, after three questions or comments on the same topic, the board president will state that three questions on the same topic have been asked and ask the board secretary to call the next person that has a question on a different topic to the microphone. We will continue this process in order to hear from as many people as possible across as many different topics as possible. At nine fifteen, the board president will announce the time and that the final question of the meeting has been taken or will take place. When the community member approaches the microphone, the person shall state their name and topic of the question. Questions and comments will be limited to two minutes or less and may be directed to the board in general or to a specific member of the board. If no board member is directly asked to address the question or comment from the audience, then any board member may answer or comment. And additional board members who may wish to answer or comment can do so as well. Board member answers will be limited to two minutes. If no board member elects to respond to a question, then the president will make a statement on behalf of the board. Questions can be on any topic except for personnel. If members of the public have any of these types of questions, they should be directed to the building principal or district administration. Thank you.
Michael Vella.
Good evening. I'm Mike Vella, 2090 Roaring Creek Drive in Aurora. And I'm here with my wife Lynn, my daughter Candace, her husband Frank, Gracie Lynn, Jack and Frank. And I'm here in support of the budget referendum to increase funding for the schools. And I'm here to speak about two reasons. First, I think the obvious reason that we all think about is education is primary for our children. And secondly, I want to tell you that we're not originally from the Chicago area. We're immigrants from Detroit. And I was there, I was sixteen, nineteen sixty-seven riots. And the terrible, terrible failure of that community to support the people. That community had about 1.2 million residents in nineteen sixty-seven. And that population fell to less than 600,000 recently. And I think the government there forgot that the residents really just want three things. They want good police protection. They want to be safe. They want basic city services, like their garbage picked up. And they want good schools for the children. And if the residents don't get those three things, guess what? They move. They move on. Other places. This area is a good place to live. I urge you, get the money. Spend the money. Thank you.
Paula Hamilton.
Hello. I'm Paula Hamilton. I live at 710 Hanover Court, Oswego, Illinois. I currently have four girls in the district. I have two at Long Beach. I have one at Plank. And I have one at Oswego East. My question to you is, I'm in support of the referendum, of the sports and all, which did affect my Plank runner. She didn't get to go to sectionals. Her sister went, was able to do that. So it was disappointing that my own daughter didn't get to do that. But I'm actually here for class size. I'm really disappointed. I have a second grader at Long Beach. She has twenty-nine kids in her classroom. The classroom size is too large. The physicality of the classroom is unable to get twenty-nine kids in that classroom. And I'm very frustrated that the teachers are not able to get to work with each of those students. It is important that we do not have class sizes of twenty-nine. She is in second grade. She was in kindergarten at there, and they opened another class size. Why is it that they did not open or are not opening another classroom for that grade? So I want an answer as to why it's not opening up another section. And I, you know, I feel for the teachers. The teachers cannot teach to every child at that age and at that level. I think there's class size issues in all, all of them. But the, at Long Beach, it's, they're too small, the classroom size. I have, a student was hit with a desk because one was bending over and another kid got hit in the desk and their head. It's just not enough room. Physically, you, we have to do something with those. And those kids need to learn. So that's what my, yeah, I want an answer to.
Thank you. Dr. Allen, I think we're going to go to you or Faith. For class size, we have a class size monitoring procedure, I think is what we're trying to talk about.
Correct. Yes. Currently, for kindergarten through second grade, we do have the recommendation from the board of twenty-eight students in a classroom. And then third through fifth grade is thirty. I am in constant communication with Mr. Murray over at Long Beach regarding the class sizes there. I have gone and I've visited the classrooms. We've put some, gave some suggestions to create more space in those classrooms and have been working with the team there to ensure that the students are safe and that they are receiving the education that they do need to receive.
So when are they going to, so you're telling me that they will not expand another classroom? Is basically what you're telling me?
At this time, no. If more students were to move in, that, then we would continue to talk about it. Long Beach also is in a, a school that does not have an extra classroom available. There are, all the classrooms are used there. So that's another thing that we do have to take into consideration.
So that should have been something that the board maybe would have thought about or everyone would have thought about, putting the Brokaw and some of those early childhood in there. Now, mind you, I'm a speech-language pathologist and I know that these kids come from early childhood and I send them to the early childhood. They need a place to go, but you also need to deal with the kids that are in the classroom. And you knew this. They knew that this class size for this grade was going to be big. So that's what I have to say.
Anyone else care to chime in there? So one of the things that was hardest for me, I also went and visited over at Long Beach with the class sizes. I don't think they were at twenty-nine when I was there. It was twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I think I visited a little bit earlier on. And one of the things that really hit me about the decisions that we keep making with board cuts and budget cuts is the class sizes and how it does affect the daily experience of the students in the class. And I know that that's one of the things that we continue to discuss and will continue to discuss because it is probably the most noticeable change, especially at the early grades, for the quality of education. And we want to see what we can do to provide for that. So I know that they're keeping watch on it. I know I'm asking about it a lot, too. There's, there's a lot of eyes on over there to make sure that your kids are getting what they need. And I think that that's going to continue. Welcome. That's it? All right. That's it for public Q and A. So any final comments from the board? All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear somebody else's thing.
He didn't use the microphone. So who said they would like to speak? Go ahead. Oh, Matt, do you want to go first? Go.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who came out. I know there's a lot of support for the referendum. But we have held a couple of forums for each of the last three years or so. And the turnout has been terribly low. So we've had more administrators in the room than parents that came out. I know that the referendum is a big topic. I appreciate all the passion that everyone brings to the table. But I really want to commend you and thank you for coming out and being here tonight. Because I said, we've, we've done this in a room for about four or five parents. So to have this many show up is really commendable. So what, whatever is driving you, keep it going, keep it moving forward and keep commenting to the board, keep coming to the meetings. We have two meetings a month held at Oswego East in the community room. So continue to show up and bring your public comments to those meetings as well. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to second what Matt said. I think that some of you know me. I'm a teacher. I teach, I'm a, I'm a teacher that has a mic that's putting. I worked here in Oswego for eight years. And so I've seen a lot of board meetings on the side that you're on. And I've seen a lot of board meetings from this side now. And for me, what Matt said is right. That if more people show up, that's one more check and balance in the system. It's also one more chance for people who are on the board to hear from people in the community that maybe we don't know or run into. And so it's super important for people to show up to these meetings and voice their opinions about every topic. Tonight, I see a lot of green, so I suspect it's a similar topic. But I, I, I think class size is absolutely an important, crucial issue. And I wish that we had more money. But wishing isn't going to make money appear. So anything we can do as a community to make that happen is what we need to do. So I hope that all of you are thinking of every single direction we can take it so that we end up with the funding we need so that we don't have to have pressure situations where we're making decisions because there's so much pressure. Okay? So that's all I had to say. All right. This one just went off. I'm going to talk. All right. Oh, yay. Okay. So one of the other items that we've had to push back on is technology. That's fair to say. Does anyone else have any other final comments they'd like to make? Okay. So mine, again, thank you, everyone, for coming. That's, it's not a joke that we've often had more administrators than public members here. And it's really great and surprising a little bit, unfortunately, for me to see so many people here. And I appreciate you guys taking the time out of your evening to come and either talk or sit and listen. It helps us understand what our community needs and how we can best serve the community as we sit in our board discussions. I think that if we have nothing else, which it looks like nope, we can go to our final item of the evening, which is that I can ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? We're adjourned. That was fun.